I can share my password with you.
Applejack.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Applejack.
Yes.
Applejack.
Yes.
My living at a state. Yeah, we're gonna be. Are we alive?
Yes, it is.
So it's statics back now. Tell me when it's seven thirty.
Okay.
No.
Silence or technology.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I could do that too. You don't need us.
I have trouble.
And absolutely.
This was conservative. There's thousands of girlfriends or boyfriends families.
Parents come in a couple of times. Now, see, my daughter swore. Yes, four months.
Oh, okay.
Will you? What team, but it's.
What's your table, your giant table?
Their table. Yeah, well, they have a really good service. Ryan. Mark, Ellen did no charge. And they continue.
Good evening and welcome to the Village Doves hearing on November fourth, two thousand and twenty one. We have a agenda with seven items tonight. I would make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is to adopt the minutes for the planning board meeting of October seventh, two thousand and twenty one. I want to thank, as always, the village clerk for getting these minutes to us before the meeting in very complete form. It's it's very helpful and it helps us at our meeting to see the minutes so that we can remember what what we said and and what we did, and we appreciate it very much.
I second.
You second? Good. Anybody have any additions or corrections to the minutes?
No, they will correct them.
Okay, all right. I move we adopt them. Is there I'm making a motion we adopt them. Is there a second? But all right. Item number two, one fifty six Palisade Street, continuation of a public hearing for site plan approval for proposed new multifamily building. This is also a public hearing, and I would move we open the public hearing in a second.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good. The maximum height is thirty seven feet. We're proposing forty feet point three three inches, so we need a three foot, three inch waiver. And we also require six parking spaces with this. We provided four in the garage, two on street, but we can obviously take credit for those. So we need a waiver for two spaces. So procedurally, this evening, we'd like you to declare your intent to be lead agency. And if we've addressed all your comments satisfactorily, we respectfully request that you authorize the drafting of a resolution of approval.
Yeah.
And so with that.
Thank you. It's been pointed out by one of our advisors that the there might be a a lot with need to.
So, Mr., the building inspector, I can speak to that. Building inspector actually sent me an email today that was the final confirmation that that is not required.
Okay.
Interpretation is that it was a previous thing.
Good. Thank you very much.
That's helpful. I'm going to turn it over to Christina to run through how she addressed her comments.
Good.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me? Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Yes? Okay. I'm going to share the screen to where I can present the latest set of drawings. Um, okay. Can everyone? Can everyone see the drawings?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, since we saw you last, we went to the architectural historical review board. And on the cover sheet, you're seeing our latest front elevation that has been evolving since we met with them to take into account their comments. I'll go I'll get back to the elevations in a minute. I'm going to start here with the site plan. We received some minor comments from the village planner. I think it was related to our landscaping plan, which we provided. But we did not have I'm going to jump right to that. We did not have our plant list at the time. We now have that. Just a second, I'm getting to it. I'm having a little trouble moving this. I don't know why. Just a second. I'm sorry, please be patient. I'm just trying to move the drawings. Here we go. So since we we provided additional drawings for the latest planning board submission, this is our landscaping plan. We just finished our plant list, which we're going to be submitting soon. That was one of the items that Valerie Manostra was asking for on her list. We also provided an electrical exterior lighting plan. We had a little typo that she noticed on our referral to the village code regarding lighting. And but essentially, the site plan has stayed the same. We focused more on developing the drawings and so that we could respond to the comments from the architectural historical review board. And here are our latest elevations. We had presented different schemes to them, some more traditional, some more modern. And we have kind of a mix of comments from the board. I think they were happy with the scale and massing. It was just really a matter of how do you handle the front facade? We had shown them the same three D spin around model we showed you to show that the the third floor is set back twelve feet from these facades. And the facade on the right is set back nine feet. And because we've set that back so far, you cannot you can barely see the third floor from the street. And so we actually had more conversation about what type of style, kind of openings. We sort of we stayed with the cutout openings, but gave it a little bit of a modern look around the entry. We also added the bays at the sides of the building just so that we could break up the long facade. And most of the aside from the bay windows, most of them are simple cutout openings, which is very much in in keeping with the design guidelines for Palisade Street. We also have two different materials. We have stucco on most of the building, and we have a metal panel on the third floor to help break up the massing of the building. And this is our rear facade, having stucco on the first two stories and metal panel on top. We also provided a color scheme, which you see here. We we have modified this since we met with them because there is conversation about the idea of how we can create a the have a primary front facade that is distinguished from that recessed facade on the right. So the way we're doing that is by treating it differently with a different color. And also, the bay windows are sort of the windows are mixed up, not in same order. And that way, we have now two different colors of stucco as you turn the building. We have this kind of brownstone color going around with interrupted by grays. Again, all these on these ideas also make it make help to reduce the mass of the building. The ARB hasn't seen this design yet, but it's it most of the ideas here is responding. There are comments, one board member liked some modern. One of them wanted to stay more traditional. So we're trying to show kind of a transitional building and feel that maybe something playful could work on the street. This is the old three D elevation, three D view. I'm just I just have it here just to show you in case you need to refer to it. Tonight, we also have our civil engineering drawings. There was a very minor comment on these drawings from the village engineer. And I was in touch with Nick Sheria from Hudson Engineering. He said that it was a question related to the deep hole test and they're the he's worked it out so they can resolve it offline. Other than that question, I think that there were no other comments for the for the civil drawings. And aside from that, I think we're we'd like to know if we might even if you have any further comments and whether we're close to a resolution on this.
I would just point out on the civil comments or comment level from last one. If you go through the responses from Hudson Engineering, I found that most of them either weren't addressed or were partially addressed. I'm not sure if it was an issue with the drawings. Obviously, it suggests maybe I have a conference call with their engineer to resolve that prior to the next submission. I didn't do a comment. It just seemed too many of these just had.
Yeah, thank you. Great.
Well, I'm thinking this is getting better and better. And the the entrance bothers, you know, on the lower level bothers me a little bit compared to all the buildings on the street. But this falls into the apartment of the architecture and historical review review board. So I think I think this in my opinion, I think it's there in terms of the planning board's purview, except for technical issues.
Right.
I I forgot to show you the streetscape with the current design. I can show you that if you like. We did update that on the top of this drawing. You can see the new facade inserted into that streetscape.
Christina. Yeah, I like it. Christina, the, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. I watched the tape of the AHRD meeting.
Yes.
You had a wonderful little hand done perspective sketch of this sort of modernist scheme. Do you have that in your deck or no? If it's too hard to resurrect, it doesn't matter.
I, um, yeah, I do those kind of sketches all the time. I didn't bring it with me tonight.
I it's okay. I guess I mean, I'll just say I also, even though, you know, the design guidelines were based on, you know, trying, you know, okay, well, how would this building look most like the other? The other buildings on the street? I actually think that the what I like about the kind of I don't know if it's really truly modern, but kind of throw a little bit of a throwback, kind of like retro modern kind of thing, is that I think you could pretend two things. Number one, I think it does help. And I think I error pointed this out. It does help with this idea of there being like two distinct parts of the building. You know, the main part and the part that's kind of clipped on because it's more asymmetrical and a little bit more playful. And I think that in the sketch, you also, the reason I wanted to show the sketches because you had these sort of horizontal canopy elements that you were going to put over the entry and over the garage entry, which comported with the kind of horizontal thing that we identified that happens elsewhere on the street, which is the porch, the roofs of the porches and entries of some of the other buildings. So I think that would be a feature. If you're serious about doing it, that would be a nice addition to the building. And may and maybe potentially it'll look lighter in some ways than the brick, the all brick building that you've been presenting. So I think I error, you know, in the AHRB, it's saying, I at least I also feel like our work, our work here is done in terms of a planning board kind of stuff. And I think I still think I still think the architectural thing needs to happen. But I, from a planning work perspective, I personally, I think it's pretty much there for me.
Yeah, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone which? Yeah.
I'm a Rosencrantz, AHRB. I agree with Rob and what the board is expressing. We are ready for architecture review. I like the direction that you're taking. I think that I wasn't sure when you say that someone objected to the modern or traditional. I don't know which one it was I, but but that's okay. It's either way, I think it's a it's there are two things that I mentioned also at our last meeting, which was related to the base. And I'm very defined base because I think it's important. And somehow was expressed in the guidelines that the relationship of the base to the street. It's it's something that is worth in depth of concern. Especially that I would say that the more inviting entry, I don't know. I I I like, I personally think that the way that the corner of the entry or the the corner window, it defines the left, the A volume or left volume to the resetting receiving scheme, the part. And but however, this long, narrow window looks, I don't know if it's integrated, integrates well or defines well the the entryway yet, might be, I don't know. It's something that it might be considered, you might consider looking it over. I will say that if you extend the canopy and do like, I don't know, parking for bicycles or something on the side, do a bench and integrate like a porch kind of situation, that might do the trick. So like a little, you know, bench and maybe a tree and extending the the canopy and do the resemblance of a porch. I think this is getting ready. I the in the prior in the prior meetings, you expressed using bricks. Now it's all stuck, right?
Yes.
And this is a cost issue?
No.
Okay. All right. Looking forward to it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other comments from the? Okay. It is a public hearing.
Hello. Yep, hi. I'm I'm getting a lot of static over the sound, so I don't I don't know where it's coming from. But so forgive me if I get distracted by it for a moment. I just have one question. I've missed the last meeting or two. And I know that Christina had spoken previously about saving both the mature tree that's in front of I'm sorry, I have probably say Denise Wood in one fifty four Palisade Street, right next door. Um, Christina had spoken about saving the mature tree that's both in front of one fifty six and the tree that's in front of one fifty four. And I wanted to know if that's still the case.
I'm going to my site, our site plan. Okay, this is our landscaping plan I just pulled up. And we actually moved the driveway and the building another two feet instead of originally. We had the ten foot minimum setback, but we have a now twelve foot setback on the right. And we've tried to locate the building and the driveway so that it's in between the two trees. And and by moving it another two feet, we are hoping to keep both trees. The one that I was worried about was this one on the street, the twelve inch diameter tree. And we and the photographs show these is really both really nice specimens. Are these the trees that you're referring to?
Yes. So are are you allowed? I mean, I guess these trees belong to the village, so it doesn't matter that they're in front of our building and not yours. Is that correct? I thought I kind of thought that one. I my living room window, I mean, one of my living room views is going to be obliterated by this new building. But the front living room window that has partial river views and also looks out at this what is now absolutely gorgeous tree. I can send pictures of it. It's like all red and golden and beautiful. And there's there's nothing, no landscaping that could replace a tree like that. And and the same goes for the other one in front of one fifty six. It's, you know, they're mature trees, you know, to to tear them down would be a crime, in my opinion. It would just be it would it would and and the one in front of our building, it it just you know, it would be heartbreaking to lose that tree.
Now, anything to really confirm this? I because I I think we took off the tree from the three D view only because it blocked the view. But I would like to I'll look, I'll which is, but I will. I will confirm this and pay attention and see if we are hoping to keep both of those trees. And I understand what you're saying. They are beautiful.
Okay, thank you.
Christina, do you know what the tree is? Do you know what the species of the tree is?
I don't because it wasn't on our survey. It's on the village property, so I don't can only that. I will have to look into this to confirm.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this? Application? Anybody on the board have other comments?
No, you're not going to like my comment, but I'm going to go for it anyway. So I'm a little bit curious about the parking, Christina. I know you asked me for a PLOP on two spaces.
Yes.
There's no waiver required. The the applicant, the property has a existing deficit. It was a two family structure that's being torn down, and it had no off street parking. So by our code, the existing deficit is allowed to continue. And the applicant just has to provide spaces for the new additional units. They are providing four off street spaces, parking is compliant.
Okay, thank you, Ed.
Welcome. What's that?
I thought they needed six.
Half the space for an extra bedroom.
For the quarter?
See.
I if I don't know, does the code say it rounds up?
Round down.
Round down.
Right. I believe so. So we need six spaces. But they're allowed to continue with the two deficit. So they only require four new ones.
All right.
So it's compliant. The height is not compliant.
You're in charge. You're in charge. Any other comments from the board?
So Ed, when you say that the height is not compliant, where where does that go as far as us? How do we?
If you want to prove this, you have to put a waiver in your in your resolution.
That's not us.
Okay.
Putting the waiver in the resolution. It's it's three feet above the.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
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 For not taking time off.
Okay.
Good.
Also.
I'm having a real hard time here. And so if I don't answer your questions, we have to repeat because a lot of interference.
If you want to kill the building three feet or just allowing it to be three feet over code, just the first floor exit more easily from the back.
I couldn't hear the question. Sorry.
So you're allowed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it just answered my question.
I I couldn't hear at all. Too much static if anyone was trying to ask me a question. But I'm happy to answer any that you have anymore. You know.
It's not that. I worked for twenty five years. It's really turned out quite well. Assuming that the technical issues.
Yeah, I think that's true. It is. I mean, when we first saw it, it was certainly I won't say it was larger than other things that are on the street. So it took some time to find a way to make this fit in more into the street. State street skate there. But I think we've come a long way, as my colleagues say.
The board has spent in the. Four hundred and fifty hours.
And they're not chargeable.
Not including that.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so what's the next step?
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Take tonight. It's an unlooked at action. So I do need you to kind of if you ever declared yourself as lead agency for this project. So just need to vote, you're going to declare yourself lead agency. And next month, I can provide you a part two and part three for you to pass to finish the secret process.
Okay. So we need a motion to do that?
Yeah, just motion.
I move I move that we do just what she said.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
We authorize the drafting of a resolution of approval for the next meeting?
Yes.
I think there's technical things that. And that's good that they want to.
Well, I can provide a draft resolution and the technical. Well, I can provide a draft resolution, and if the technical issues get activated then, then you'll have.
Okay. Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Levery today, and.
That would be, the goal would be to have a resolution.
Make sure the engineers get together to work out.
Submit a complete set, everything in drafts.
Hundred percent. Absolutely. Great. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
18 Fairlawn Avenue, continuation of public hearing for proposed new in-ground pool and rain spa.
Submission for this application, so I would recommend that we adjourn this to the next meeting.
I think the only open issue was, was the question that.
I, when I heard they were doing some investigative work out there, I think they've been, seen it, and so I don't know if they're gonna come back with.
Okay, right, because that was the only open issue. So their engineering issues pending, that's what's going on.
Yeah.
Well, I guess they were looking to see if there were any existing infiltrators or manhole was building there, and, you know, to make sure nothing is.
The manhole had a W on it. Does that mean, does that mean mystery?
I mean, they're, they're trying to pull a pull in the very small area.
Good evening. This is Michael Stein with Hudson Engineering. Just to give you a brief summary of what the results found. So they had actually gone out with Shoreline. They had excavated at multiple places in the backyard, looking and following, tracing the drainage, the drainage lines from the roof leaders and other places. Also excavated in multiple places, looking for the, for any type of, sorry? Looking for some type of call tech system. What they discovered was there is no system there. All the footing drains and roof leader drains tie directly into the catch basin that goes into the street. So we're gonna be going through, the survey's been updated, and we're gonna be updating our plans and submitting for the next meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next item are, are, we have to continue. Is that a public hearing? If you're, if that was, yeah. To December, whatever. I'm sorry, yeah. I move that you adjourn the public hearing to the next meeting.
December 2nd.
December 2nd.
Second?
All in favor? All right, next item is item number four, 253 Johnson Avenue. Continuation of public hearing for proposed demolition and replacement of single-family structure.
Hi, everyone. I'd love to make sure you can hear me. Okay, great. And I am, I'm also hearing a lot of static on your end, so forgive me if you can't hear your, your comments or questions so clearly. I'll just reintroduce myself. My name is Shamita Basu. My husband, Michael Marfion, is, is also joining by Zoom. We're very sorry we can't be there in the room with you tonight, but we're back to present an updated plan for our home at 253 Johnson Avenue. So we've taken some time to process the comments that we received in our last meeting and to work on addressing them. So since the last presentation, we have hired Christina Griffin Architects to take over the design of the home, and we asked them to specifically address the massing of the house to make sure that there is a cohesive design that fits with the context of the neighborhood and to, of course, adhere to the most up-to-date zoning codes. So we're looking forward to showing you how the plan has evolved in response to comments made by the board. We also asked an arborist to weigh in on the trees on the property, and we submitted that letter to the board. A little later on, we will ask Susan Janchel, our landscape architect, to present that letter and what it means for our plans. We will have a more complete submission for you next month. It'll include an updated engineering plan. But it was important to us that we check in with you at this point and make sure that we're addressing all of your comments to your satisfaction before we continue. And to be honest with you, the extra time that we have spent on these plans just means that we've had more time to think about how much we're looking forward to calling Dobbs Ferry our permanent home. So I'll now ask Christina and Suzanne to take over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shamita. For the introduction. We're really delighted to work with Michael and Shamita on their new home. And we have taken a fresh look at the house and come up with a design that we feel is, really fits with the scale and character of the Hudson, Judson Avenue neighborhood. This is our set of plans. This is our cover sheet. Can everyone see the drawings?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna take you through, first of all, our site plan. We have taken a look at the size and the footprint of the building. The building now is, meets the lot coverage, meets impervious surfaces, coverage. We've reduced the impervious surfaces. We have opened up the rear yard setback, increasing it by 3.5 feet. We've increased the side yard on the, on the north side by 3.9 feet. And we have taken a look at just seeing how we can really make this building have a better fit with the site. So if we look at a close-up of our zoning calculations, you can see that, starting with the lot coverage, where just, we're at 16.4%, just under the 16.5% allowed. Where maximum and our impervious surfaces is 28.1%, under the 30% allowed. Our, our front yard, side yards, all meet the zoning regulations. And all, also our maximum, our height of, to the ridge and our height to the eve is within the set limits and the context, context-based limits, based on our calculations that we're going to show you tonight. Next slide, please, Suzanne. Thank you. This is our latest first-floor plan. We have changed the design so that the, there is a symmetrical treatment of the entry. And we've aligned the two front facades. We're looking for ways to give the house more consistency. We also wanted to have the garage on the right be less of a strong, mitigate the shape and size of that, and you'll see that on the elevations when we get there. We have actually just gone around the building and come up with ideas to have everything have a little more cohesiveness. And generally, the goals are the same, layout very similar. And I will go to the second floor just to show you. That has changed a little bit in that we've just reorganized and redesigned portions of the second floor. Keeping in mind that we want to have a lower roof line, which really helps to also mitigate the height and mass of this house. So we'll go to the elevations now. So the west elevation, I don't, if you recall, the previous design had a tower in the front and had a very tall gable at the garage. We have taken away those elements. We've introduced this lower roof line, so we have a one-story piece of the building breaking up the height of the front wall, and that lower roof line wraps all around the house. We have now, the gable in the front is actually at the media room space rather than at the garage. The garage is much quieter and tucked in under this lower roof line. And we've also kept the garage doors still to the right of that because we want to make sure that's concealed from view from the street. I also want to mention, I forgot to mention on the site plan, the the layout of the garage and the driveway is very much based on allowing a car to turn around on this site. The original driveway did not allow that, and you'd have to have a car back out. So, you know, that is a very big improvement because it is a long driveway. So we have a turnaround there, but it's still tucked into the side of the house. So back to the elevations. We now have a strong entry feature that is symmetrical, with centered with windows above and windows on each side. This kind of anchors the house and gives it, or, and helps to organize it, give it a focal point. And all the windows have a consistent theme of two-over-two light pattern, but slightly different proportions. We paid attention to the scale and proportion of this house to make sure that there were setbacks and walls that were not longer than 25 feet, so that would help reduce the mass. On the south elevation, which is our next one down here, is showing the garage on the side, the lower roof line that wraps around. The more consistent window pattern to give the house a more harmonious feel. We also changed the angle of the roof, so we didn't have such a tall and massive hip roof. Next slide, please, Suzanne. East elevation is the, the view from the backyard. It's just simply showing that the treatment of the windows, there's more glass there because it opens up to a beautiful yard and, and view of the woods. And on the north elevation is just showing the changes that we made having consistent roof, windows treatment and the lower roof line at the front of the house, where we have a lower gable over the media room. Next slide. Now, this drawing is showing our study of the streetscape. We inserted the elevation of, of, of the house, 253 Judson here, to, to the right, where Suzanne's blowing it up for us. And as you can see, the, the height and the shape of this house isn't really that different than the height and shape of some of the houses on the street. There is a variety. We looked at also the houses across the street, which are below. Some, some houses are longer, some are, are taller or shorter. But I think the proposed house is within the range of sizes and scale of buildings that are existing on the street. Down below, you'll see that we did a calculation of the houses that are within 200 feet of the property. And we have a list of the eve height and ridge heights. We came up, came up with an average. And as you can see, the average eve height for the street is 22.7, and we're at 21.3. So we're under the average, and the average ridge height is 32.8, and we're at 29.1. And the second line here is a set limits default is 28 and 30, and we're also under those numbers. Next slide, Suzanne. So in all respects, now the house will meet Dobbs Ferry zoning code. We also took a look at the sky exposure diagram with this current design, and you can see the sky exposure plane on each side of the, of this profile of the house, and we're well within the, the sky exposure planes. We have it going across the site with, going with the S, west elevation on top, and then down below with the south elevation going across the site. Next slide, please.
That's all we have for.
Yes.
For the, the trees.
Yes.
Yes.
And so I'd like to introduce Susan Chanchil, the landscape architect. And she's going to describe the landscaping plan and her response to the comments about the trees.
Thanks, Christina. Hi, I'm Susan Janchel. Actually, let me turn on my, I don't know how to turn on my video here. Oh, well, so you won't see me. I am Susan Janchel, and I presented a landscape plan last time that we saw you. I have not updated it since then because we're still working on the architecture. And I will modify the landscape plan once, once it's established that, that we're in the right direction. But what I am here to talk about is the arborist report. We had Tom Serpey of Davies Trees come out and, and look at the trees on the site, the mature trees on the site. And I believe that you have a copy of his report dated October 22 in your materials. So if you see on the drawing up on the screen here, we have six trees that are pointed out here. The, the arborist reviewed five of these trees, and that, those are what we're seeing here. The white pine, which, which is to be removed, tree number one, is in good condition, but it does conflict with, with, with the construction plan. Tree number two, which is that red oak, which is 33-inch diameter, is actually the, the, arborist found that there was some damage probably around 25 years ago is what he says. But what, what is left is, I guess, a co-dominant stem had broken off, and there's a weak point around three feet from the ground level. And for that reason, he thinks, he says that the tree is in poor condition and should be removed. You know, it's not imminent, but it's something that will be going within, within a short time. The next tree is number three, which is in the area of the courtyard. This is a Norway spruce. It's a 22-inch diameter, and that tree is in good condition, but just the construction activity will, will not allow it to survive with anything going on within that area of the root zone. The fourth tree, which we had mislabeled before as an ash, is actually a smooth bark hickory, which is a lovely tree, except for this fact that there is a stress crack on the east side of the trunk. And there's, that's an indication that the tree has twisted at some point. It's really interesting going to the site with arborists. They just see these things that a naked eye cannot see. And, and, and he said that, that for that reason, that tree is, is not one that's gonna survive for long, and that it should be removed. And then finally, the fifth tree is a red oak that we were gonna try to save. But really, couple of reasons. There are signs of stress and dieback on branches, so it's in, in not the best condition. But with, with construction around there, you, heroic efforts wouldn't save it in the, and it's really near both this proposed house as well as the house next door. So that is a tree that we're planning on removing. The sixth tree that we're planning on removing, that we still need to get the arborists to come and look at, is up on the upper left of the drawing that you're looking at here. It is, I believe, an 18-inch pine, and that is proposed to be removed because of construction, and we do not have the determination of the condition at this point. So in summary, there are two trees that are in good condition that we, we are proposing to remove. The other three are determined to be in poor condition. And then one we do now. And that, that's all I got for you. Thank you.
Is that it?
That is all.
Any comments? There's a public hearing. I think we should, if we didn't, right?
Second?
All in favor?
I.
I. Anyone that wishes to. So, I, I guess, the kind of feeling is good news is, this is like a demonstration of how the same base of buildings can either be made to look like a McMansion, which is the way we characterize a previous design, or in the hands of a better architect, can be made to look contextual. I have, I really don't have any issues in there with. with the scale of the house and the way the mass works with the rest of the houses on the street. For me, the bad news is that it is it is basically the same I would just have up on my screen here, the previous submission. It is basically the same house. And I just think that the approach to the landscape is just very insensitive. And I have to say, I was kind of hoping that you know, when there was this idea that the house might be redesigned in the capable hands of Christina Griffin, that it would be but in addition to all and I guess if that and you know, I know that the artist, I saw him as well, he's kind of making recommendations about mitigation. And I guess we'll see what that is. Manipulate the floor plan in such a way that it wasn't necessary to take down the by my meaning, the five trees, they're actually two that are in good shape and one that's could be not in great shape, but could be managed, so. Taking down the trees. And the and I still feel like the driveway is overdesigned. In that if if even trying to make it possible for there to be a reasonable place for part of that to turn around. I think that the reworking of that entire burn next to the scene feels very heavy handed. So I mean, you know, I just I I'm like I said, I'm encouraged by the fact that I've got them asking me to be managed. But I feel like there hasn't been a lot of creativity about the way in which the plan might be changed, be the same size, the same amount of wood, but the way in which the plan might be manipulated. And the site plan might be manipulated to be more sensitive to the landscape. It still looks very much imposed on this instead of sort of designing it, so like designing against it. In my, in my view, it's to the same degree that the previous scheme was. So that's.
Anybody else have comments? Somebody on the way?
Yes, yeah, hello, can you hear me, please? Hi, thank you. My name is Matthew Scott Anson. I'm representing the Dobbs Ferry Conservation Advisory Board. And it's really addressing the trees. I want to say we do, you know, wish to welcome the Marquion Abasuk family to to the street. I live further down the street. I happen to also be on the Conservation Advisory Board. So I think I haven't seen the previous plans. I can't comment on them from an architectural historical point of view. And I just wanted to point out from the, you know, the tree point of view that the Conservation Advisory Board, which is looking after the, you know, the natural conservation of the village would would appreciate any efforts you can do to save any of those mature trees that are that are healthy. Any ones that can be, you know, perhaps construction can work around them would be great. As well as any replantings that you may be able to do. You know, I think the the site plan that we're looking at now looks really neat. I know the property. I know that, you know, I've walked past the house a million times that's there. My focus here is just, you know, looking at the trees and and making sure that that as much is done as possible to save any of the mature trees that are there. As well as planting new ones that can become mature in a in a short time. Thank you.
And I I just say, I just want to mention that I think you'll be pleased with the planting plan that that will. You know, if you haven't looked at it yet, there will be very much introduction of native appropriate climate appropriate planting as well as in the future, they they do want to improve the area that is beyond the construction limit line here to really make the the downhill area of the site more more native and more you know, in line with with what should be there in terms of a natural quality.
The closer to the street, I think you're saying.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Close to the street where it really is interesting. And the former homeowner did some interesting things, but it really needs to be updated and
Yeah.
introducing things that are much more appropriate for our climate and our regional, you know, our regional landscape.
Yeah, it's a wonderful spot and and it's got some some neat things on it that aren't even that old that that can be replaced. But I think anything you can do, again, you know, the one over the shade garden, over the terrace area and and over by the driveway. Anything that can be done to save those ones that aren't in bad condition would be would be welcome.
Okay, thanks. We hear you.
Thank you. Look forward to meeting you guys.
Anyone else have comments?
Lou Jager, I'm at 247 Jackson Avenue next door. Could we go back to the last slide? The plan is back. There's a tree over here. That's the south west corner. But I think anybody it's the it's and it's within driving distance of my house.
Just to let you know, we can't really understand anything that's going on. There's like really strong static.
There's that, I guess it's a 23 inch maple or whatever, it's or 24 inch maple. It may not be the only tree, but maybe several other trees. But there was can you hear? Anyway, there may be more trees. I believe there are more trees in that corner that may not be shown here. And so I just was asking the question as to whether anybody's going to be looking at the extent to which any of the excavation.
They don't show any building there.
Right, the trees are on on the children's village side of the property.
Well, they show a pool equipment pad five feet from the property line. But that shouldn't be huge, a huge problem with the tree and the and the actual excavation for the pool is shown to be 17 feet or 16.7, 16 feet, seven inches from the property line and the tree is set maybe five feet away from that additional. So that's like 20 feet away from any excavation that's planned. I don't know how big that tree is and where the drip line is, but that's pretty far away.
As to whether the roof system of that tree is large enough for there to be a concern about that. That's all.
As a homeowner there, is children's children somewhat responsive to, you know, stuff that falls from their property on dear?
Thankfully, you haven't had the issues. I can't really answer, but I assume.
I also feel that if you know, effort to save at least the Norway spruce and white pine and you know, a tree that is dying back a little bit can get treatment to get healthy again. It's not as if it's dead, so. You know, so you can make that look at that and see. But at the same time, I'm curious to see the next landscape plan. Because you can do a lot of of it planted, so. I I like to echo some of what Rob said. I think the house is 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 much less imposing. I like the design better. All that's great. Well, that on the north, the south side of that driveway, it's quite a steep bank and it goes down quite a ways. Am I correct there? And and it seems like a lot of fill that's going to have to be involved. I just think that if that hasn't been looked at from an engineering standpoint yet, I'd like to see that looked at and if it has, I'd like to see more detailed information about it.
You know, because if you're an engineer, the question is whether or not that's a heavy handed. This is a single family house, right? And it's a pretty heavy duty driveway and a pretty heavy duty division. It's a new driveway. To, you know, it's just, like I said, I feel like it's sort of unresponsive to the landscape that's there. And I don't, in some ways, we're not convinced that the driveway configuration necessarily has to drive turnaround.
I'm sorry, I'm having a little trouble hearing, but I just wanted to pull up this slide to show the old driveway shape here. This this new proposed driveway is the same as the original submission, which should include a four foot retaining wall. I believe that's detailed on Hudson Engineering's drawings, but we can get you more detail on that. But I just, I just wanted to point out that you know, the new turnaround we added here is really in line with the old driveway that's up here. I just wanted to point that out.
Scale of the driveway and its location on the site is very, very different. And I don't know what your point is about the same as the previous submit, like if you if you mean was it that way there?
Well, I just, I thought there was some concern about the steep slope here, but I just wanted to point out that that, you know, the the beginning of the new driveway is the same and we did add a little bit of a turnaround up here, but that's already where the the old driveway is and the terrain is flat up there. So I just thought I'd point that out.
The driveway is actually larger than the speed driver.
The old driveway is goes goes up to here. Yeah. And the dash, the dash line indicates the old driveway here.
I don't have anything to do with it. So maybe it's a couple of things. It's both the footprint of the driveway feels longer also the direction of the drive more forward towards the, you know, the front of the property requires the retaining wall and fill, whereas before it was a little bit further back, maybe went more with the grade, so. Yeah. I think to change that, you'd obviously have to change the configuration of the garage and maybe not. Maybe, I mean, I think you might have to change the configuration a little bit to do some of the tree, to say some of the trees, so. Yeah.
No, I'd like to mention a few things. It's so hard to hear you, but I'm trying to follow everyone's comments. When we started looking at the project, Michael and Shamita came to us with very clear goals for a house that would be a place that actually has an art studio in it. It has this very quiet, almost like a meditation courtyard on one side and a family friendly outdoor space on the other. And this is, you know, some a place home where they plan to have family, extended family. And and there's all these very clear and specific requirements that they were looking for. And and even the orientation of the spaces so that there would be the active family friendly outdoor space on one side and quiet on the other. And the garage stayed in the general location of the previous house because it felt that it was away from these other outdoor spaces. And we wanted to give them a turnaround or that was actually part of the original plan to help because it was a long driveway and the previous driveway you had to back all the way out to get out of it. But I I see what you're saying because we shifted it over a bit. It has a a big impact on this property. But we also have a very beautiful landscaping plan that we just don't have to show you tonight, but it has additional trees, especially on the northern side and a really nice landscaping on the front of the house along the new driveway. So you kind of, when you're creating something new, you have unfortunately takes something away that's part of nature or is a it, we, you know, has had impact on the trees and a lot of the trees are actually removed because they're they're close to construction. So even if you you know, slightly move some of the pavement, you're well within the grip line of a lot of these trees. So it's not easy to design the house without removing the trees. But I'd like the board to look at our landscaping plan to see how we've actually put back a lot of the trees in different locations.
Thank you.
It might be helpful for me at least to see a drawing where you show the old house and then imposing this the new design on that as well as the driveway, just so we can see the change.
This, I'll just, this this slide here, the the footprint in orange was the previous design. And our design is in, you know, the purple color and you can see where they overlap. The driveway and the pool have stayed in the same location. And and we've just added an extension to that, to the to the driveway.
I I think what the chairman is talking about is a comparison of this to the existing.
Yeah, that's it.
Not to the previous scheme. She's talking about an overlap, I think. Where
Yeah, I have the old design here, but also the existing house is dashed.
It's dashed, yeah.
It's dashed.
The original house is the dash line.
Yeah.
It's not the color. It has nothing to do with the coloring.
The color is is, I was just, I was also showing the previous scheme. I thought you were asking about that. But this, the dash line is the old house. And it and the and then the outdoor areas there. We can, we can make that more clear on the next go around.
Dash line on that drawing was the footprint of the original, the previous house.
Yeah, okay. Because the discussion seems to be like this is some big change in the, in my mind, it's not a big change at all.
From the previous scheme.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's the same. The massing, the massing is but it is exactly the same.
You can see how that's pushing the driveway out.
Yeah.
Creating the wall in the front and
So, so, yeah. No, I have an issue with the driveway. Scale of it is such that it requires a huge amount of site work that I think is very heavy handed on this landscape. It's not just the width of the location, having to regrade, put in this retaining wall and so on. So that's why there's sink.
Yeah, I don't see any way around it, Rob. reshape the whole house. The the massing of the house. It relates to both problems, both the driveway and the tree and the other landscape.
I'm afraid I don't see the problem, but. So where are
because I don't really see the problem either. And I, if there is one, I'd like to see it, you know. So
So.
You don't see, you don't have a problem. Why do you think it can't be configured in such a way, made smaller and configured in such a way that it wouldn't have such heavy handed impact on the topology there? A bit and, and design, like, I realize you want to make the driveway reasonable, but you don't, do we need to design a site plan around it? I don't know, I just think it's very, it's, there's a lot of different ways to get this same program on the site. And sensitive to the landscape.
I don't see the issue. But you don't want the garage doors spacing the streets? And you don't want to rotate this thing 90 degrees? And you don't want to put the garage over here on the left hand side? I mean, you don't want to see.
No, no, I'm just saying.
No. I think that this, even the original driveway was kind of pinched between the sloped area, you know, in the house. And now the house is bigger and it, it's almost, it's impossible to get this driveway in the same location. But the siding of the house, I think, I think it works where keeping the garage where it is. And unfortunately, um, it's not really possible to do this unless we change the hill there. And remove the trees. We can, of course, give this more thought and see if there are other options. But we have actually reduced the size of the house. We've reduced the impervious surfaces quite a bit, I think from 39 to 28%. We have, um, from their original program, we have made changes to reduce the impact on the site. So it's a, probably in your mind, a matter of degree, but I think this is one of the challenges of the site in any case. Because, um, once you put, uh, you know, you decide on the size of the backyard, which as you can see, it's not that, it's not that generous. And it has a pool, of course, that needs to fit in the back. We are, um, and there's a very special, uh, feature that is very important to them. And that is that quiet meditation courtyard. And, uh, we, we are limited in how much we can reduce the house because each room is not actually very large in itself. So it's very hard to push the house to the left or towards the back to go back to that original driveway, which barely worked. You know, it really hugged the hillside and went right along those trees. So this is going to be a challenge. So we can look at it and see if we can even reduce the impact even more. But I, I can see that it's just, those trees land in the middle of the new driveway. So to change the location of the driveway is going to change the whole layout probably of the house. I'm not sure how we're going to, we can make it work because we don't want to reduce the backyard any more than it is by pushing it back. I'm not sure, maybe we can push the house a little bit to the left. But as you know, I'm sure that if you are changing a structure so that it enters, it, it tears up roots, a root system of a tree, you know, it can affect the health of the tree. So sometimes, even though the driveway now is right up against those trees, if we, if we, um, put the driveway even closer to those trees, it could have a negative impact on the health of them. So we will, um, certainly discuss your concern and see if there are other options. But I hope you keep an open mind and can see when we have our new landscaping plan, you can see how we're putting back, uh, you know, native garden and, um, privacy, um, uh, screening with evergreens and trees. And it, it is something that is a, a new creation, I guess, a recreation of the site. But, um, you know, it still could have very beautiful effect. And I don't, I don't think it necess, you necessarily have to keep what's there to have, um, uh, a beneficial effect on the, on this property and on the neighborhood, you know.
Thank you. Christina, would it be possible to get some, some kind of a visualization from the street showing the new driveway? Um, you, you make those beautiful hand sketches. I hate that for that. Maybe some rendering or, you know.
Yeah, of course. We can do that, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, somebody else.
Oh, we have one.
Thank you. Matthew Scott Hansen again. I'm speaking this time as a neighbor, not as a conservation advisory board member, but, um, I, I've walked up and down the street a million times. I think, uh, you know, I've, these plans to me as a, as a neighbor, not the next door neighbor, I have to say. The driveway looks very similar to me to what's already there. And the two houses up the street uphill from it also have retaining walls, which is, I think, necessary, given the fact that there's a small stream that runs down through there. I'm sure it can be done in a tasteful way, uh, but I think that to not have a retaining wall might also be a risk to the, you know, to the entrance of the property. What's there now works with what's with the house, which is there now. But I think that, uh, you know, a retaining wall on Judson Avenue on that side of the street is, is by no means, uh, something that doesn't fit with that side of the street because of the other houses which have it. And, and just, you know, objectively from the rest of the design, I think it looks like, um, you know, the new owners would, would like to have a good relationship with nature, you know, given the, the implements that they're putting into the house and the design of the house. So again, I'm, I'm from the conservation advisory board. I'd like to keep as many of the trees as possible. But I think that in general, the, the design to me as a neighbor, uh, looks like, um, you know, it, it should fit with the street. I'm not the next door neighbor, but, um, to me, it, it, it seems that, again, the driveway approach is, is nothing unusual for the street and is relatively similar to what's there now.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments tonight?
If you may adjourn it, Anthony brought it to my attention that you're actually, your December meeting is the second Thursday. That's what's advertised right now and it's on the calendar as such. So it's December 9th and that's what we call it.
Oh, okay.
So, um, so just correcting the record, we adjourned the first two to the first.
December meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, good. We all voted to. December. Thank you very much.
Quick question. I'd just like to ask the board, is there any possibility we can move ahead and go to the architectural review board? Or would we need to wait for the next? I mean, can we do that simultaneously while we're going through planning board review?
I would go ahead.
Yes?
No, we, yes, we try to stay out of the architecture. We don't succeed, but we try.
Okay. All right, we'll move ahead with that. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is a vacant lot on Briary Road or off Briary Road.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the applicant asked to be continued. He's still working with the surveyors and looking for some deeds.
For that application. Good luck for him. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. To that application? No. Yeah, you, we would need.
You can, you can call me. But there's a process, so I, I'll give you my phone number and you can call me. Okay.
Thank you.
Right, I'll wait, Anthony.
Item number O, vacant lot. Item number five.
That's, so he said that.
Yep. 21 in place, public hearing for proposed renovation in addition to existing one family residence. Including unfortunate patio.
Oh, that's October, sorry. Looking at the wrong one, sorry.
21. Ah, Christine's back.
It's so hard to hear you. I think you said 20 Liman Place, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. All right, here we go. Hold on.
Thank you.
I didn't understand that last fellow's question. What was that about? Wasn't ecstatic.
Can you see the drawings?
Yes, yes.
Yes, great.
Can the board see the drawings? Yes. Okay, um, we're back for our second meeting where we're here with a pre, I guess, uh, pre-site plan review last time. We have provided, um, our, our civil engineering drawings, I believe. And, um, we have, um, provided, um, some, we had, we received the, um, memo from the, um, village planner. And, um, we're going to take a look at the site plan together. I think the only comment we had was, um, that the fence is, um, we have a new fence that is proposed to be, uh, it's off the property line and, uh, we kind of wanted to have a conversation to find out what the policy of the village is regarding these things. That was the only comment we received on our site plan, I believe. And, uh, we also actually made a little change. We are extending the garage in the back and we provided all the zoning calculations for that, to show compliance with the setbacks. Since we met, we, yeah, this is the plan of the garage and we're planning, we're showing an extension to the garage. Still meets the, um, setback for an accessory structure. So we added that to the plans. Uh, and, um, we also provided a plan to show the exterior light fixtures on our site plan. And so we had that for you to review. And here are our civil engineering plans. I don't think, um, we also have, um, a site plan. This is a planting plan by the landscape designer. And if, um, you look at the plan, you can see there's a little garden that's planned right a, along the new walk. There is an existing, uh, very steep, um, walk and steps going all the way up to the front door. And we're changing it to have gentler risers and, um, adding, um, a turn just so that it's not, not a straight walk. And as you see, we're going to provide a, a garden here. The existing walk is already, um, outside of the property line. So our new walk, um, ties in with the existing walk, uh, right where we're going to have a new fence. And the position of the fence allows us to have a comfortable garden there. And, uh, I don't know if there's too much, too many, um, if we have any other information. Uh, the elevations of the house actually did change slightly. We're just improving the design, um, slightly. We added this gable here on the west elevation so that we have a slightly higher, um, part of the house in the back. But it is still, um, a very, it's still within the, um, maximum ridge height and eve height allowed. So, um, I'd like to, um, ask the board if you have any other comments or questions.
No, I, there was, there was, there were some comments, um, from, from our engineer.
Yeah, I mean, the, the fence extending out to the right.
Yeah. Okay. Did you, did you receive the comments from the village engineer?
I don't think so.
Yes.
Did you, Suzanne?
Yes, we have them, yeah.
I mean, I was fine with the stormwater calculations and design. I just, I actually have other comments about the cleanup. Oh, yeah, the construction interest during.
Bowery, any issues?
No.
No, thank you.
I mean, this is a public hearing.
There's only, only one member of the public here. You have anything to say? Okay.
So I'm ready to put this project as a.
I need to report to public hearing. I happen to have a. Background, whereas. Oscar and Petra Bonbeck are seeking a site plan improvement to make renovations to an existing single family residence project. The proposed project consists of a one, one story addition, a two, a two story addition and a second story addition to a portion of an existing one story structure. A new patio extension and a new one story porch. Subject property is changed to five acres located at Klein Liman Place. Whereas the project will be sold as a construction expansion of single family homes. Residents, this class 300 uh, state environmental review act, including regulations of type two action. Whereas the planning board conducted a due notice public hearing opened on November 4 and concluded on November 4 during which all those wishing to be heard were given the opportunity to be heard and provide written comments. And then, if I may, it's part of the council. Resolution goes on and in four pages, three pages summarizes the usual stuff included by. Asking for a motion. I move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening.
Item is fifty-four, Clint Avenue, pre-submission package for proposed modification to existing apartments. We have someone to present.
Hi, that's me. Can you hear me all right? And there I am. Hi, how are you? Uh, I'm Crystal Picker from Michael Lewis Architects, um, with, uh, Brandon Stewart and Michael Lewis. Uh, we're the architects for the project. Also watching tonight are the owners, Ruby and Elias Eliopoulos. Um, so I'm going to share my screen. Um, can you see that?
Yes.
What else? Great. All right. Um, I I expect most of you are, Ellie, somewhat familiar with this site up until quite recently. It has housed the women's club on the first floor and then two apartments above, one on the second floor, one on the third floor. It's in the MDRH district, um, which has a total of seven properties, six of which were built before nineteen hundred. Uh, the intention of the MDRH district is to to reinforce this existing pattern of larger historic homes uh, that have been subdivided into multiple dwellings, um, while maintaining the exterior appearance of a a single family home. Um, and that's exactly what we're proposing. Based on our, uh, lot area, we could, uh, propose up to ten units. We are proposing four. Uh, one of them will be occupied by the owner. Um, so we're, we're bringing back to the site that that real, um, benefit of a, an owner occupant that's really going to care for this, this beautiful building. This is the, as it stands today, as it has for for quite a while now. Um, it's a quick walk around the building. An introduction. Uh, so the, the current site has this beautiful turnaround to the, the single main entrance and this, uh, drive back to a small lot in the back. Um, what we are proposing will, will keep the front turnaround, the main entrance. And then we're improving the, the back towards to add parking to support the new apartments, um, including a new four car frame garage, um, that will of course speak to the vernacular of the existing building. You know, hide that parking in the back to keep it really, really beautiful back there. Um, we're providing these three, uh, parallel parking spaces, um, fully within the setbacks, again, the four spots in the garage and one more parking spot in the port cochee for the owner's unit. Um, speaking of parking, uh, we found out quite, quite recently, actually, that we're over on our, on our lot coverage. That was a very, uh, late, uh, late addition. Um, we, we thought we were completely in compliance and then we submitted and, uh, Ed found a code that was enacted apparently earlier this year and never posted. Um, so we're now slightly over, so, uh, we're, we're hoping for a little leniency there. We're trying not to be egregious. We love this site and we want to keep it very much in the, in the vernacular of what's already there. The, uh, walkways are, some of them are existing, some are new. Um, we're, they're all going to be upgraded, um, to ho- hopefully some sort of a pervious paper to keep that, keep our impervent lower. So that's the, that's the site here. Um, very briefly, we'll look at the elevations. We are adding, so here's the front as it stands today. We're enlarging, uh, this side youth to make the interior apartments, um, especially on the third floor, um, a little more comfortable. Um, if you've been in those, these old buildings, say you have a lot of very low ceilings. So this is going to open it up. Um, but again, we're, we're keeping, um, very much within the existing vernacular. Um, and we're going to clean up, um, all of the exterior woodwork will be fully renovated. Um, it's going to be truly beautiful when we're done with it. Um, here's the sign where the new port cochee. This is the existing. Uh, we'll get rid of, um, the, uh, the fire escape that was obviously not original. Clean it up a bit. Um, we have this new port cochee and some nice clean lines, um, that will, you know, again, speak very cleanly to the existing architecture. Um, and then in the back, um, again, cleaning, cleaning up some of the additions from over the years. Um, a nice porch, um, some clean lines. Um, so, uh, we would, um, love to hear what the, the board thinks of it all. Did you have any questions?
How to reduce your permeable surfaces?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time understanding you. There's a, a lot of static.
Yeah, we, we, we've had that problem all night. Have you had any, uh, thoughts about how you might decrease your permeable surfaces?
Well, um.
Yes. Sorry.
The improve, yeah. Well, well, that's the, that's the thing is, is again, up until extremely recently, we thought we were within our coverage. Um, uh, the, the newest zoning that, um, took effect, I, I guess, earlier this year wasn't posted to the website. Um, Ed kind of handed it to us, um, off his desk. Um, so, so, you know, we, we feel that we have not been at all egregious with the coverage here. You know, we were trying to just keep, keep it down to what, what we needed to do the parking to serve the, the apartments. You know, we're well within the uses, a very reasonable use. It's actually a pretty low intensity use for, for what could happen on this site. Um, so, I mean, we were, we were hoping, um, for perhaps a waiver on that, that issue. If, if you had thoughts on where we might decrease coverage, you were, we're happy to hear them.
You know, you have, you have time, so, um, I just think it's, it's obvious. I just wondered if you've looked at the problem yet. And I like to say that, uh, you know, I have fond memories of this building, so I'm glad it's being renovated and reused and, uh, repurposed and, um, I'm, I'm, I'm excited to see where, how this moves forward. Oh, I've got my wife in that, bad reception in that building, so.
Oh, beautiful. I love it.
I mean, I just want to say, I think it's the, it's beautifully done. And I think the drawings, as an architect, I just really appreciate the drawings because you had the, you have this kind of hard thing you had to do of showing this combination of what gets destroyed and what gets saved and what gets renovated. Beautifully done. I'm also glad that there's a way to, like, save this building.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Excellent. Uh, we did receive the planner and the engineers' comments. Um, they, they all seem, not, the other thing was terribly surprising other than the, the aforementioned zoning issues. Um, so we're, we plan to have full engineering drawings for the next board meeting. We're well on our way there. We actually got our percolation test today and they came back really, really what, good, so we're, we're confident on our stormwater and all of that. Um, so we, we look forward to, to moving this through quickly.
I think we could call for a public hearing in our next meeting. For a second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, might, might I, um, ask if, uh, perhaps one of those waivers would be on the table for that? You know, we, uh, we originally did not anticipate we would need to go to zoning. And you only, only found out very, very recently that that was a possibility. Do you think we're going to need to go to zoning for this?
Could we repeat that with one wave, whether or not we would, you know, waivers for the non?
For, for, yeah.
Right, so the non-compliance pieces right now and, uh, the building inspector also preferred is dealing with the height of the building, um, lot coverage, building coverage, and then the size of the accessory building.
So the height, the height barriers were, uh, uh, again, there, there was no height restriction bef- prior to, um, a couple of months ago, I guess. Um, it, we are not raising the height of the building. We're just adding a dormer that just happens to be above this, this sort of arbitrary thirty feet. Um, that's actually pretty, pretty low for the size of the buildings on this, on this site.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of this seems to be pre-existing, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think the issue is that they're, um, increasing the roof, right? So therefore.
I guess. Yeah.
So that will be above the eight hundred square feet.
But the, the roof on the, is that the? But it would not affect the sky exposure plane because there's a lot of space over that side of that.
Right, so we asked for, they have not submitted for the sky exposure plane. And so that's something that they need to provide at the next mission.
Did you hear that?
A sky exposure plane?
You don't need to do that.
Okay.
Sky exposure. MDR one, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm kind of like reading lips here. This is atrocious. But, uh, I'll just make some comments because I can't hear what people are saying. And, uh, I'll just give you my observations if you can hear me. So the, the sky exposure plane is in the code just for the OFS and the MDR one. MDR two and MDRH are not included.
Okay.
So you're building lot coverage is over. Impervious coverage is over, which I think you could work on with, uh, permeable surfaces. The, uh, building coverage, I think, should be a waiver, but that's up to the board. Uh, the, the roof height is existing, but the code says that, you know, if you make any changes to an existing non-conformity, you will need a waiver. You know, that's, uh, really minimal, should just be a simple waiver. The, uh, the garage, the new garage, I think, is the biggest problem. So you're allowed, code allows you a maximum eight hundred square feet. It also calls out that you could have, you know, four parking spaces, but, you know, you have a kind of large footprint for those four spaces. I, uh, you know, it's up to the board on that as well. And the other thing is you're allowed a maximum twenty foot high on that accessory garage, but you haven't, uh, labeled the height on your plan.
Uh, we are under the, we'll add that, yeah.
And, uh, I think you should uh, just, we just need to hear from the C A B on the trees. And that's all I have. Sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Ed. Um, I, I can actually hear you very well and that was really helpful. Thank you. Um, the garage, um, not to interrupt the board on the garage, you know, it is, it is generous. You know, we want it to be comfortable, but we might be able to, to work on the size with that. So if, I mean, if we can get the garage coverage down to that eight hundred square feet, do you think you'd be amiable to the, the other two waivers?
I would think so.
Yeah, but you can't say yes now, but you can consider it.
Sure, okay, yeah, that's, that's what we're here for, to, to see how you're feeling about everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, we'll see you soon.
Yeah, hi, it's Matthew again, representing the C A B as, as Ed requested the Conservation Advisory Board. Um, just speaking, I, I don't see any trees on there that need to be taken down from our point of view. So the permeable surfaces, um, I think Ed also mentioned rightly that there may be, uh, ways perhaps that the, the new paved area could be at least partially paved with, uh, permeable materials instead of, uh, instead of just asphalt, if that were a way to, uh, increase the, you know, just from a water runoff point of view. I think, you know, the, the house looks great. I drive by it every day and, and, um, I'm also glad to see, have a lot of fond memories of the place. I'm glad to see, uh, how similar it looks to the old one, but, you know, I'm here from the Conservation Advisory Board. I, uh, can you point out whether there are any trees that are to be removed? Um, as part of this, I don't see any, I didn't see any in the, in the plans.
Um, uh, well, first off, um, to address the permeable paver issue, um, that is absolutely something we're, we're looking at. We're, um, right now, we're trying to, to balance, um, obviously the coverage issue with, um, the, uh, owner's, uh, liability with ice and maintenance and that sort of thing. Um, so we'll, we'll, we'll take that into account. Um, as far as the trees, we are, we are removing these, um, these trees in the back for the garage, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, I think I, we could maybe defer to the tree commission on that one, but, um, you know, other than, other than to say, if, you know, any replanting could be done, uh, to make up for those. Um, but I think the tree commission would have to look at, at the size of those and, and types, et cetera.
Yeah, and we're, we'll have a landscape plan for the, the next meeting. We're, we're definitely planning on, on doing some plantings, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.